Okay, we're ready to go. Thank you, everyone, for joining us in Spanish Fork City Council Chambers on September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. We appreciate everybody here in attendance and those attending online. You can hear it never stops for our public safety officials. We hope everybody's okay on the way to a call this evening. We'll get things started off as we always do in Spanish Fork with a prayer motivational message and in the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilman Carden has the motivational spiritual thought and prayer tonight.
Yeah, I have invited Captain Reed to come up and share a few things with us.
Sorry, I'm going to read Chief Hording's motivational and then I'll give the prayer since she went on this call. So, as we pause to remember September eleventh, the day that will always be etched in our nation's memory, not only for the tragedy, but also for the strength that followed. Out of the smoke and rumble came courage, unity, and a reminder of what it means to stand together. The firefighters, police officers, medical workers, and everyday people who stepped forward on nine eleven showed us that the greatness isn't always about extraordinary talent. It's about ordinary people choosing to act with courage when it matters most. Each of us faces challenges, both big and small. We may not be running into burning buildings, but we all have the moments when we can either shrink, sorry, either shrink back or step up. The legacy of nine eleven challenges us to step up, to live with purpose, to support one another, and give our best no matter what the circumstances are. So today, let's carry that spirit forward. Let's honor their sacrifice by how we live with resilience and courage and with unity, because when we choose to stand together, there is nothing we can't overcome. Our dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful for this night that we can be together as city council members and friends. We are grateful for our city council and please bless our mayor, city council members, and our city leaders, that they will have the guidance to be able to serve and make the decisions that they need for this city. We are thankful for all those who serve in this town and that makes Spanish Fork a great place to live and call home. Please bless our servicemen, and we are so grateful for the freedoms that we have in this country. Please bless that we can have kindness and peace during these troubling times. We are grateful for all we have and for your hand in our lives. And we say this in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Captain Reed.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You'll notice up here on the dais that we're down one council member today. We wish Councilwoman Beck safe travels as she is, she's away for the rest of this week, I believe. And we know she's probably watching, though she can miss a meeting, but I'll bet she can't miss watching us. So we'll try not to mess it up. Councilwoman Beck. Takes us to item four in our agenda, the public comments section. This is the section of the agenda where you can come up and address the mayor and council. Please keep it to three minutes around that time if you can, but come up if you'd like to share anything with the mayor and council tonight that's not on the agenda. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to council comments tonight, and we'll start on this end with Councilman Marshall and go that way to Councilman Took.
I'll give you really short. I don't have any comments.
That is short. Super short. Thank you, Councilman Marshall. Councilman Euler.
Tyler, are you ready? You got some? Okay, so Tyler, we'll start with the video, but before you get to that, I'll just share a little bit of what this is about. So, one of the committee assignments I have is to serve on our Historic Planning Commission, and so I thought it'd be appropriate to maybe share a little bit of Spanish Fork history tonight. So next year, next September marks the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of when Escalante and Dominguez hiked down the canyon and made it to Spanish Fork. And a quote that I found from what they said when they got here, Mayor, was, "Someday this valley will be the location of one of the greatest, most beautiful cities in all of Utah." That's what they said. Spanish Fork, verbatim. No. It's kind of a big deal. Our city, Spanish Fork, is named because of this expedition of these guys. The purpose of their expedition was to try and get from New Mexico, a route from New Mexico to their missions that they have in California. They made it as far north as Utah County, spent a few days here in the Spanish Fork area, and then turned back and went back home to New Mexico. But as we've discussed this with the Historic Commission, we wanted to find ways that next year we can celebrate this. In the past, so fifty years ago, in nineteen seventy-six, they celebrated by building a statue. So there's a statue just across the street behind the Parks and Rec office. You can go ahead and play the video, Tyler, if it'll play, but...
This didn't have sound, right?
Nope, no sound. So when they had this ceremony fifty years ago, they invited the governor of the state to come and speak. They had Mayor Tim Moran at the time that spoke as well. They had a big celebration, and then they love the uniforms that the guys are wearing there. That they're speaking now was the governor. Can't remember his name at the time, but... And then Tim Moran speaks after the governor, but they unveiled the statue that was built. Pretty, pretty cool to see that fifty years ago. And so the bronze statue, so looking at that statue, was designed and built by the sculptor named Averd T. Fairbanks. I don't know how many of us in the room even knew that. But Averd T. Fairbanks, anybody familiar with any of the other statues or sculptures that this guy built? Just curious. And nobody. Okay. Tyler, why don't you go through some of the photos, and we'll talk about some of the, I know for a fact, some of you have seen these. So, the first one is a sculpture that is up at the, this is the Place Monument. It's a Pony Express. So I guess hit number one, you can actually see what he looks like. So if you hit the back arrow. So that's Averd Fairbanks, the sculptor.
Oh, him.
Yep, that guy. So if you go forward now, so this is the statue that's up at, this is the Place Monument. It's the Pony Express statue. The next one is a statue that is back east in Nebraska, I believe. It's the Winter Quarters statue that he designed for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And then I guarantee most of you have seen and recognized this statue in Provo, just outside of the Lavelle Edwards Stadium. So he's the one that did the BYU Cougar that sits outside of the stadium, and he's also the same guy that built the Dominguez and Escalante statue that sits, sits in our park. So the Historic Preservation Commission, we're hoping to be able to work with Spanish Fork City and Parks and Rec Department with Emily, to be able to celebrate in some form or fashion next year, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the discovery of the Spanish Fork area by Father Escalante and Dominguez. So as we begin to make plans and work on different projects, we would just invite the public and those to help celebrate next year as we, as we make plans for that. So something to think about for the upcoming year. And that's all I've got, Mayor.
Awesome. Cool footage. Thank you. Councilman Euler, Councilman Carden.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wanted to thank Captain Reed, and then Chief Hording was going to be here, but like she mentioned, as we've heard in the building, there's some events happening in the city that they're off to help with. I appreciate them always being willing to step up and serve our community. Just a few things to report on. The Arts Committee, or Arts Council, held their Harvest Moon Hurrah a few weeks ago at the park on Friday night. It went really, really well. It felt like there was, the park was bustling with people all over the place with the food trucks going on, music. It was really great. So thanks to all those who could be there, and then also that helped make that happen. I know it's going to be talked about a little bit more later, so I won't belabor it, but we have Wings and Wheels coming up on the twenty-seventh of this month. Christian, I believe, is going to talk about that a little bit later in the agenda. I wanted to thank Utah County and the Brent Taylor Project for bringing the nine eleven memorial to the city. That was awesome. If you didn't get a chance to see that, it does travel around the state, so it will be somewhere else next year, but such an awesome event. If you didn't get to see that, you really did miss out. I don't know, I spent some time talking to the police officer that was there, and he had, if you started asking him questions, he could go literally all night, and it was awesome. We took our youth group, and it was awesome that night. On Thursday, I was able to attend our UU City Council meeting. Again, I brag on them a lot. Love that group. They're fun to be with. That happened to be nine eleven, that day. And so I was able to share with them a little bit of my experience of nine eleven and what I remember as being in their shoes, because I was in high school when it happened, and sharing some of the emotions of that day, which is a day that hopefully none of us will ever forget what happened that day. And I shared with them, you know, some of the things that I remember of seeing it on the news, and my parents had turned on the TV, and I saw the second plane be struck, which was, it was traumatic. And it was, it was controlled, though, because it was on the news. Unfortunately, the day before, we had a tragic event here in the valley of a shooting that happened at Utah Valley University. And unfortunately, some of our kids were seeing that on social media. And I could see it in their eyes and some of the things that they shared. And so that night, I shared something with them, and I want to share it with everybody here, is that when we have traumatic events like that, when we go through things, remember that we have resources to reach out to, that we shouldn't suffer in silence. There's a great phone number, nine eight eight, that can help you get in contact with somebody to just talk. There's counseling services, there's things out there, because unfortunately, our kids with social media are seeing things that they should never see. And not whether, whether they intend to or not, it's happening. And so if you need that, or if anybody in this, you know, in the sound of my voice needs someone to talk to, know that there's resources out there for you. Know that there's someone to talk to through these events, and so that you can, you know, kind of filter through what you're feeling. So that's all I've got, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Carden. Appreciate that. Councilman Took.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I have a couple items. Our Chamber of Commerce president was unable to make it with us this evening, like she usually does, and so she's asked me to share and relay a couple items to you, important events. The first one is yesterday, we had a grand opening and ribbon cutting for the Designer Home Interiors, their business here in town located on South Main Street. They moved just across the street, beautiful new building, just south of the fairgrounds. And it was a wonderful event. Just, I said it, but it's amazing building. They have upstairs, downstairs. And then the back of the building, they have place, other businesses that will be occupying those units. In fact, one of them will be occupied by our Chamber of Commerce here in the near future. So it's fun to go in there and see where they will be, and our Business Community Hub will be in that new facility as well. So, good stuff happening there. A couple other items I wanted to share with you in regards to the Chamber of Commerce. We have ribbon cutting this coming Friday, the nineteenth, for M-Tech. It's the new campus in Payson. Exciting. Ten o'clock AM, in case you're not sure where that's located. It's nine nine three South, nineteen fifty West there in Payson, Utah. So again, that's for M-Tech's new campus. Ribbon cutting, be a lot of fun food and different things going on to celebrate that. We also have ribbon cutting for Rasmussen Jewelers, new location. That is by Vasa, right there, six ninety-three North, nine thirty East, Spanish Fork. They're just in the same building, just the other side of Vasa. That's on Monday, next Monday, May twenty-second, or excuse me, Monday, September twenty-second, rather, at noon. So that's for Rasmussen Jewelers. And then that same day, we have another ribbon cutting in the afternoon for Argyle Custom Furniture. So again, Monday, the twenty-second, three o'clock PM, here in Spanish Fork. That address is seven twenty-six South Main Street, Suite one oh two. Again, that one's for Argyle Custom Furniture. The last item I have from the chamber is the Business Summit. That's next week on September twenty-fifth, that Thursday. This will be a really fun event. If you're interested, please reach out. We'd love to have you attend. It's a, there's a networking breakfast that starts that day at eight o'clock AM. Speakers start at nine o'clock. We have keynote highlights from Intermountain Market President Kyle Hansen, and then Brandon Fugel will be speaking at eleven o'clock. Very exciting there. Also, interactive AI workshops from BYU Professor Michael Atkinson after lunch. And then really great stuff. Again, this is hosted at the library in Springville, so forty-five South Main Street there in that city next to us, the Business Summit for the chamber. And then I just had one other item here I wanted to share, and that was, I wanted to thank Spanish Fork City, particularly the Parks and Recreation Department for working so well with all of the LDS stakes in Spanish Fork for the nine eleven day of service this past Saturday. I saw the numbers come in, and all of the service hours, and the massive, just projects that were completed, and beautification of our city and different things. And it's impressive when you get together groups of people who care about the city and care about each other, and just taking care of things and making where we live great and even better. And so, so thank you. Thank you to the city. Thank you to the LDS stakes, and particularly Barton Morrell and Taylor Banks from Parks and Recreation, and a couple others. But really appreciate the collaboration that we had to make that a successful day, and we'll do it again next year. I'm sure it was so successful. So that's all I've got, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Took. I appreciate that. Everybody that shared the Just Serve pictures and stuff, that was pretty touching to see, that they were in a lot of different places in the community, and marked a tough day that Councilman Carden touched on. And the way that it was marked was by everybody getting together and help beautify your city and volunteer. And so, thank you all for doing that and being together in your city. Talking to Jenny Taylor, the Gold Star wife of Major and Mayor Brent Taylor, that was killed in action. She's the impetus of this nine eleven project. And again, in the fifth year, like Councilman Carden touched on, again, a great event. If you missed it, get to it next year, and you might have the opportunity to get to it here. They were sure appreciative of all the help they got, the volunteerism, and our Parks and Rec Department, and Nick and Angie down at the fairgrounds that made that a seamless event, and was able to just get that many, that many kids and that many citizens and people from all over Utah County to come see those important, important depictions of a day in our nation's history. And so, we hope, we hope that we might be on a regular rotation. And if we are, again, I'd encourage everybody to get out to that if you can. It really was something to see. Councilman Carden, I appreciate you touching on that with the youth. I think that's, that's my message to our city and our residents, is just like we start out with a pledge and a prayer here in Spanish Fork, and we always have. It's because we're a tight-knit community, that what unites us is a whole lot stronger than whatever divides us and differences of opinion. And so, we can, we can certainly be an example. We are always an example of that. I feel that what can happen online is not what can happen in real life. And so, do what we do, helping each other, and our community and our lives are better for it. So appreciate, appreciate you touching on that there. Okay, takes us to staff reports. Manager, parents, is there anything that the staff wants to follow up from meetings past?
We'll follow Councilman Marshall's lead.
Don't do that too often.
You don't have to.
Nothing? Okay. All right, takes us to Spanish Fork one-on-one. Councilman Carden, I believe, touched on this as well, but Wings and Wheels. I'm not sure who's talking to us about that today, but, oh, there he is. Mr. Christian puts on an event every year that he'll tell us how many thousands, but it seems like it's growing by thousands every year.
Yeah, yep. So we've got our annual Wings and Wheels Air Show event coming up on September twenty-seventh of this month. This is a growing event. Last year, we had our biggest year yet with just over seventeen thousand attendees, and judging by our pre-ticket sales this year, will grow probably by another several thousand at the event. So, if you want to hit the next slide, Tyler.
So do you mean to twenty-four thousand?
Several more thousand.
Several more. That's a seven.
Yeah, we're kind of ballparking over twenty thousand right now at the event, so it'll be pretty big. So again, event date is September twenty-seventh, from nine AM to four PM. All of the event details can be found at spanishfork.gov/airshow. This webpage includes tickets, event maps, our performer lineup, all of our sponsors and their information, and then sign-up links for different rides and aircraft that are at the event. Some highlights to changes this year. We've got a new teen ticket that's been added, which hopefully makes kind of that more family-friendly for families to come out. Again, twelve and under are free to come to the event, and if you purchase your tickets online, you save five dollars per ticket. So we encourage online ticket purchases. Notable aircraft coming to the event this year. Over the last two or three years, we've, from event attendee feedback, have found that the historic World War II aircraft are by far the most favorite. They're also my personal favorite, you know, just understanding the connection to our ancestors and the things that they've done in the past. So we'll have what's called a PBY Catalina, which served in World War II. It's that flying boat in the upper right-hand corner of the screen. It actually sunk a U-boat off the coast of Iceland in World War II. The next notable aircraft is called a Privateer. It's the next aircraft down in the photo lineup. This is the last flying Privateer aircraft in the world, also served in World War II as a Navy patrol bomber. And then the next is the bottom right-hand corner. This is called a C forty-seven. Its nickname is Old Number Thirty, and this specific aircraft flew supply missions behind enemy lines in the Mediterranean arena of World War II. And then the final notable aircraft is the B seventeen on the lower left-hand corner. Its nickname is Ye Old Pub. In World War II, there was a specific incident where a B seventeen was bombing Europe, and it was severely damaged, and a German fighter plane could have shot down this aircraft, but instead made eye contact with the pilots of this aircraft and escorted them back to England without shooting them down. So really neat historical ties coming to Spanish Fork. We'll have a lot of aircraft rides available that weekend as well. So we'll have, the next four aircraft on list are all historic World War II aircraft that the public will be able to purchase rides in. The C forty-seven, the B seventeen, the B twenty-five, and the SNB five will all be selling rides. Again, sign-up links and payment links for those can all be found on our airshow website at spanishfork.gov/airshow. And then we'll also have helicopter rides for sale at the event. This event absolutely could not happen without our sponsors, so we're really grateful to them and their support of this event and bringing it to Spanish Fork and the public here in Spanish Fork. My favorite part of the event, aside from the World War II aircraft, is just seeing people come and enjoy the connection to the airport and to our history as Americans. So, some great images up there of kids and families just coming down to the airport and having a great time. It's absolutely a family-friendly event, so mark your calendars and come out to Wings and Wheels.
Christian, buying tickets early will help you get in the gate faster as well, right? That line, when you find out something's going on.
Yep. So please hop online and get your tickets in advance. That'll really maximize your time in the venue.
Rather than waiting in line to purchase a ticket, it can get long, depending on the time of day.
Any other questions?
Anything else? This is your chance to ask if you can blow out the fire stuff.
Yeah, who's doing that? Somebody scheduled that?
Your name's on the.
On the shortlist?
Yeah.
He'll get ahead of me, I'm sure, but...
For a guy who doesn't vote, he gets to do a lot of cool things.
One vote, and my vote is I get to press the button. That's the button. That one right there, that picture, that last one.
It'll cycle through.
It's coming.
Yeah, while that's cycling, I've got some gifts for...
Okay, thank you.
That one, right there.
That's pretty cool.
Christian.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christian. Thank you, Christian. We've had Christian here more than a few times over, over the years, and it's not always just to talk about his signature event down there, but the public's noticing, if you drive north on Main Street, the airports changed quite a bit. Any update you want to, I know you gave us an update a couple of weeks ago, but any more updates there of when roads are opening and we'll see planes in those hangars?
Yeah, yep. Pady Aviation right now is working on getting certificate of occupancy on about almost twenty hangars right now, hopefully within the next month. We've got a new access road on the north side of the airport paved. They're doing a little bit of finish work on that, but that'll be called Aviator Way. That'll be open within the next week. And then over the course of the next three or four weeks before the paving deadline of October fifteenth, we'll see a lot more asphalt laid on the north side of the airport. So lots of changes.
Cool. Very cool.
That's awesome.
I think we sometimes forget, because we're, it seemed like we're always in construction season in Utah. I get it. I drive this, we all drive the same roads, but, but North Main Street and pretty soon to be Dry Creek Parkway that runs into the freeway there, there's going to be a new exit. That's a, that's a big change for our community. When you start adding up the dollars that are being spent there, there's hundreds of millions of private dollars, hundreds of millions of public dollars on that exit that are going to make that a very, very busy but important thoroughfare to our community. So, thanks for keeping them straight out there, Christian.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Christian.
Thanks, Christian.
Okay, Wings and Wheels, get your tickets. It's going to be, it's going to be a blast. We'll see you all there. Takes us to consent items. Manager, did you want to say anything other?
I want to highlight something Christian said, make sure that people understand. They can get a significant discount off the price right now if they buy online. So that is not something that people should...
Five bucks off the ticket.
It's a big deal.
Yeah.
Right? If money's an issue and you're interested in this wonderful event, like, take advantage of that. We, it helps us to plan better knowing, so just want to make sure to highlight that.
Kids are free.
Kids are free.
Yep, their twelve are free.
Yeah.
Save five bucks if you do it online.
Okay. So you bring your kids. They don't cost anything, but...
Can you just let them go in?
You can't let them go in, Shane. Don't, it's not, it's not a daycare. You're not...
Good thing your kids are old enough that you're not worried about that, right?
I thought I'd ask.
Don't want them running around or...
Grandkids can't go by themselves, yeah.
But I will tell you, it seems like I, that day, because of all the planes that are around and the, and the cool tricks that they're doing in the air, all of a sudden, you know, it comes around nine, ten o'clock, and you just hear those planes. You're like, what is going on in the city? Don't, don't be the one that forgot to buy your tickets until then, because you'll, you'll be in a line to get down there and, and the show's already going. So buy your tickets now. You'll save money, and you won't want to miss it. Consent items. We have three consent items, A, B, and C. Any questions on the consent item agenda from council members? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
I move to approve the consent items, A, B, and C.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, second by Councilman Marshall. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Consent items are approved. Takes us to the public hearing section of our agenda. We have items A, B, C, and D here. The first is an ordinance to vacate a portion of Calpak Avenue, and...
Mayor Council, I'm Joshua Nielsen. I'm the Assistant City Attorney. Ron is on a partial vacation. Maybe not. It says partial vacation. Makes me think of when you go on a vacation and you're still trying to do work at the same time. Is that a partial vacation? Or if you're going to Calpak Avenue for a vacation, that's got to be a partial vacation.
That's definitely a partial.
That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about Vacating Road. Sorry, bad lawyer jokes there.
Those are fantastic lawyer jokes. Come on.
Sense would like them.
Don't sell yourself short.
We're talking about the vacation of Calpak Avenue, partial vacation of Calpak Avenue. Is there a laser thing on this one? Oh, okay, yes. So Calpak Avenue is right over here, right? It comes all the way down. It's been here for a long time, the old, I think they call it Fritzy Building that was right there before. So what we're going to do is realign this Calpak Avenue. The developers are in the process of changing things and finalizing their plat here. And so we're going to realign this Calpak Avenue so that it looks like, so this shows where the old one was, that would go up here. And now we're going to turn down here at the bottom. Instead going this way, we're going to come where the green line is. And so, it's going to go perpendicular to the Highway one forty-nine, one sixty-four. I can't remember the number, but to the highway there, that way. So in order to vacate a road, we have an interest as a city in the public right of way. And there's a process under state code under ten nine, nine eight six oh nine point five, where a developer can petition the city to pass an ordinance vacating a road. We're only, in order to do this, we have to make certain findings. Those findings being these two, namely that good cause exists for the vacation, and that neither the public interest nor any person will be materially injured by the vacation. We believe that's the case, since we're simply realigning... We believe that's the case since we're simply realigning where this road is going to go, that nobody is going to be materially injured and that there's good cause for vacating it. So that's what we're asking for with this ordinance. Any questions for me?
Tyler, can you go back to the last image? Is there, and you might not know the answer to this, and it's okay if you don't, maybe Dave or Cory. Is that going to be a signal stop? Is it right in, right out, or what does that look like?
It will just be a stop sign on the Calpak.
So what it is today?
Yes, what it is today.
Same width as the other road as well?
Cory, will you turn, Cory, will you turn on your microphone and say that?
This shows where the current signal is, right down Del Monte Avenue, where that circle is. This is the old, the current Calpak, and then there's not, there's an ingress, I think, or egress where the old Fritzy Building used to be, I think, is where they're coming out right through there.
It aligns with the driveway of the...
Well, it's a driveway across the street. Okay.
It'll be as it existed before it was gone, just a stop sign on the side road. That being a U-dot road. Future signal or things would come with a warrant and over time. Looking at the spacing, I wouldn't anticipate a signal or anything like that in the future. So if these residents need to get to a signal, it would be coming out and cutting across.
Like from a speed limit, size-wise, except for just where it's located?
Yeah.
Cool.
And a finished road rather than just asphalt.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Joshua before we go on a public hearing? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd entertain a motion to go on a public hearing for item A.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, second by Councilman Marshall. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item A. Anybody here to talk about the vacation of a portion of Calpak Avenue?
How's everyone doing? I'm Brandon Dennison. I represent the landowner, so just, I'm here to answer any questions you guys might have from, from the landowner perspective, to give you an update on the construction. Paving is supposed to be finished probably by Friday, so construction is well underway. If you've driven over there anytime in the past couple of months, you've seen all the construction going on, so we're excited to get that all finished up. But happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Questions for Brandon right now?
Thanks.
Thank you, Brandon. Appreciate it. Anyone else from the public for Calpak Avenue? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Took. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Discussion back up here for item A. Pretty straightforward, moving a road a little bit. Any other questions?
Nope, pretty straightforward.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion on item A.
We're all looking at it like, that's a lot of words. I'll make a motion. I move to approve the ordinance vacating a portion of Calpak Avenue, a public street located between Arrowhead Trail and Del Monte Road, based on the findings that contained in the ordinance and specifically that neither the public interest nor any person will be materially injured by the proposed vacation.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall.
Second.
Second by Councilman Took. A roll call vote here. Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Item A is approved. Thank you, Joshua. Appreciate that. Takes us to item B, ordinance.
Mayor, if I may, just really fast, express some appreciation. This has been, this is really fast here, but this is not something that was done quickly, right? This started, Joseph, I think. Well, if you're going to go back to there, yeah, the project back to 2021, but even this vacation process, this is a long vacation, although it's just a partial one.
Nope, not good.
Working, dang it, I tried. I was trying to draft. I was trying to, hold on. But anyways, working with the project and developer on this one, starting back in, I think, May, coordinating the closure of the existing entrance and then, and then moving it included the demolition of a really large structure and a lot of work that's happened throughout. And so this, this vacation will happen at the same time as a dedication and all of the work that will happen to make the new alignment be able to open up. So we appreciate the work with the developer. Vaughn and Joshua have worked a lot with, with the developer staff to make that happen. And I think everybody's excited to have the, the road get opened again. So anyways, we appreciate your coordination, guys.
That's a good point. I appreciate you marking, marking that moment a little bit. Seth, that's a, you look over there and that's a, that's a huge building that was, was taken down and the development that unless you lived here for a long time and looked over there, it's completely changed today. And that's, that's a lot of work and a lot of time, so.
Plus a giant water tank that had to get moved. I can only imagine the work behind getting that thing emptied and moved off the property. I bet that was a lot.
Was there water in it?
Oh, yeah. There was, right? There's water in it.
Filled up one of the city pools with it, I think.
Could have easily.
Okay, thank you for that. Takes us to item B tonight. Ordinance for the Ray Allen Swenson annexation.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I want to start just briefly, and I know there are people in the room that knew Ray Allen Swenson a lot better than I did. I certainly appreciate having had the opportunity to meet him and to be around him a little bit before he passed away several years ago. Every resident, I think, of Spanish Fork today has the opportunity to benefit from things that Ray Allen did as a member of the community, helped in tremendous ways with some of the recreation projects that have happened and in other ways as well. It's a pleasure to see something like this, in my view, kind of memorialize him. I appreciate the family naming this annexation the Ray Allen Swenson Annexation. Subject property in this case is on the southwest corner of State Route 77 and 1750 West, which is a relatively new street way up on the north end of the community. Really the only thing, by way of a landmark, that I think is recognizable, Old Dominion Trucking has built the facility just across the street from what we have outlined there in yellow. Old Dominion's just east of the 65 acres that are included with the proposed annexation here. That being said, if you've been to this part of Spanish Fork recently, you'll see that it's changing rather quickly. We're well above a million square feet of industrial building space that's under construction. To some extent, kind of within a stone's throw of the subject property, there are utilities available today, an increased utility capacity heading in the direction of the proposed annexation here. Different things that I think make it very, very clear that this area is certainly in the path of development today. An aerial image taken from the southwest corner of improvements that were made with Old Dominion looking northwest across the subject property. I think that gives you some idea of what's there today, which, looking to the west, not a lot. But when you see streets with curb gutter and sidewalk there, it's a pretty good indication also that there's utility capacity available and different things like that. Again, back to the idea that the subject property is in the path of development. Again, just a different image of 65 acres. You can see from this image how the subject property fits in with land that's already been annexed into Spanish Fork. What's kind of shaded in gray there, that's in Spanish Fork City today. That area without the shade is still in Utah County. The gray shading in this case is indicative of industrial zoning, the Industrial One Zone, which all of the property but for the airport, the airport is zoned public facility. Everything else out there is zoned Industrial One. And one of the things that we discussed as staff in reviewing the annexation is the idea that potentially today, with the annexation, the property could be zoned industrial. And while the Development Review Committee and Planning Commission have both recommended that the annexation be approved with agricultural zoning, I don't think any of us likewise would see a problem with zoning the property industrial. Maybe one thing I'd suggest that could be considered there is that right now with the current land use map of the general plan, the subject property is designated agricultural. With a draft that I think there's general consensus on, the proposal is to have this property here instead be designated industrial. So I think that's forthcoming in all likelihood. So I'd say there are a couple of options for the council to consider, and I don't really see strong benefit or detriment from going either way. Whether it be zoned agricultural at the time of annexation, which would mean that an applicant would have to submit a zone change application, and there'd be a process that they would go through before the property could develop in the future. Or whether the council were to assign the Industrial One Zone at this time and to some degree maybe streamline the process for an applicant down the road.
Dave, sorry, I missed what you... Did you say it was the Planning Commission that recommended agricultural zoning?
Both the Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission, yeah. There is a little bit of, you could maybe say additional oversight that can be executed on the part of the council with the zone change. Because I think that's partly why we as staff have recommended that agricultural zoning be assigned now.
Dave, did that change? Because in the staff report, it says RR.
Sorry, rural residential, yeah. For me, that's kind of agricultural, but yeah. So rural residential is the recommendation, that zone. Do you have any questions about that? From my perspective, truthfully, I almost hate to call it a no-brainer, but for lots of different reasons and for what we've experienced with the council working on other properties in the area that have been annexed in recent years, it seems like this is a really good fit and that the time's appropriate. And it's a matter maybe of how you just want to handle zoning. You might see it differently, but I think that's staff's perception now of how ready this property is to be annexed and how few of issues really there are to deal with at this time.
Questions for Dave before public hearing on this one? Notice during the protest period, no protests received to the annexation, right?
Exactly.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing for item B.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Marshall. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item B, the Ray Allen Swenson Annexation. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'd... Okay, we got Ray fans, relatives of Ray, I think, yes. I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by...
The kids get up and say something about their dad. Come on.
Well, they can do that.
It was great. Actually, you're right. He really is.
We could, we could, if we have questions, we could call you up, but I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing. First and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, aye. I've confused you. Sorry, Dan. Sorry. We're out of public hearing. Any questions for the Swensons, or would you like to compel them to come up and speak? I think, I think that's a good idea. I haven't... Okay, is that the speaker? Come on up, introduce yourself. How I remember your dad, Ray Allen,
Yes.
was up at your house on the east bench. And it seemed like when I was a 13-year-old boy and it was time for me to probably have a talking to from my dad while we're going around talking to farmers about their water, would end up at Ray Allen's house. And I think it was partly because my dad wanted Ray Allen to probably tell me something that he didn't want to tell me, you know? He was nervous about, because your dad was not shy about, about speaking his mind.
Oh, no, he wasn't.
Yeah.
And we're all the same.
Tell us your name.
Well, except Shauna. She's not here, so that tells you.
That's right.
But yeah, I think Dad would be, I think Dad would be, he loved Spanish Fork City. He was very, loved the trail. The trail was a big, big thing for my dad. And he talked to the farmers about, about them parting with their property so that the trail could go in. And I think that was a big, big thing. He'd sit on his back porch and look at the trail. And at one point, he went down and he had free water for people walking on the trail by the pavilion that we have down. And that was a really, really big thing. So I think that this would make him very happy. He would be very happy, so.
Very good.
Cool.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, just to add. My, my memories of Ray Allen started, you might remember, he helped us host fellows from Europe. If you remember those, maybe a Sunday dinner where you'd have Carol and Ray Allen would have a group.
Oh, yes.
We call them the Marshall Fellows, and you'd host one or two, and they were so fantastic. And of course, he always would feed them lots of bacon. That was Ray Allen's thing, right?
Sour dough biscuits.
Yeah. But this was one of my first experiences with a Spanish Fork resident, and I was introduced to somebody who loved their hometown. Like, Ray Allen is all in on Spanish Fork, and every interaction that I had with him, that was reinforced. It just, he just loved this community, and I really appreciated that because it helped teach me, you know, what it means to be a part of this great community. So I'll always love your dad for, for what he taught me.
He was a great guy, and he also went and sang at the Hail's Rest Home every Tuesday, and he'd go to the extended care and sing. And the sad thing is, is that none of us know how to sing, so I'd sing, but I don't know how, so. But that's our memories, and he was a great person, and he taught us a lot of great, a lot of great things, and we're very proud to be a Swenson, so.
Well, he was a great farmer, too. He wasn't just a great member of this community.
Yes, he was. He was a fabulous person.
He was a great farmer.
Let me just add, I worked with Ray Allen on the trail. That trail would not exist today without him. He was the catalyst that made that trail happen.
And he used a lot of swear words, probably.
Well, I know he, I know he talked...
Probably heard a couple of swear words, I'm sure.
No, he talked in farmer language when it was talking to farmers.
And he always said, it's okay if a farmer swears, it's not a swear word.
See?
If it's used by a farmer, it's not a swear word.
Nope, I'm not going to do it, but I agree. Oh, no, he'll do it in a second.
I didn't get into the drawl.
Anyway, thanks, you guys.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Any other questions for the Ray Allen Swenson Annexation request?
Yeah, I think I agree with Dave. This is as close to no-brainer, especially with the applicant being that supportive of doing it. It's happy to get this into our community. From a zoning perspective, I, in other words, we have a general plan pending. I think it's appropriate to wait for that general plan to be moved forward so that it's, this can be consistent with that. We try hard not to be inconsistent with the general plan as we make these things. So I would, I would stick with what the DRC and Planning Commission came up with and move it forward as given to us.
Change it later.
Yeah, let it change later.
Yep, I agree.
Get a good chance to see what the industrial would bring at that point, anyway.
Semi-sounded like a motion.
I can make one.
Yeah, go ahead.
I move to approve the ordinance for the Ray Allen Swenson Annexation based on the following findings. One, that the subject property is located within the city's annexation policy boundary and growth management boundary. That the city's general plan and land use designation for the annexation is agricultural. That the rural residential zone would allow for property to be continued to be used in agriculture, agriculturally.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall.
Second.
Second by Councilman Cardon. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
And Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Item B is approved. Thank you, family, for being here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, takes us to item C in the public hearing, section of the agenda ordinance to approve the maybe site plan development enhancement overlay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So what we have is an overlay zone application for an office building on roughly a quarter acre property. This was taken before DRC for site plan approval, and in the course of reviewing the project, found that the amount of buffer or landscaping along the property owner to the south was only five feet instead of 10 feet. So in talking with them, they, they had concerns about adjusting that to meet the current standards because of the neighboring development, the LNS commercial development. They had a development enhancement overlay approved with their project to be able to have some reduction in setbacks and to also have that short, smaller buffer next to the residential property. So this is in the C2 zone with a commercial, or sorry, mixed-use land use. So this is in the C2 zone with a commercial, or sorry, mixed-use land use. So this is the site plan showing this, and in initial discussions during DRC, we found that they could have done a little bit better with presenting some landscaping that would enhance, like the zone says, enhance the development. So with that, they went back and they added trees along the south end, which was a requirement, but they also added 41 shrubs on the property as well, and it's not a lot of area to do that. They also wanted to reference that the LNS property, you can see the elevation on the top, and this property on the bottom were done by the same architect, so they have the same architectural features to make a nice, consistent, cohesive development. This is the two landscape plans next to each other, so they're showing that with a shared parking lot, patrons and employees will have access to South Lane as well as to Main Street. So increasing that landscape buffer that's required by the current code, what you'd have is that everything would be shifted north. They'd have to reduce the footprint of the building, redesign the entire building, as well as you'd have these kind of weird angles that doesn't really make sense in staff's opinion. I added an aerial showing the house to the south to show kind of its relationship with this development, as far as where it's located and how far away it is. So with that, staff is recommending approval based on the required findings that are in the development enhancement overlay zone, which talk about not causing any detriments to patrons or neighboring property owners, not impede traffic flow, and not cause any, anything that would be detrimental overall with the easing of those requirements.
The property to the north is commercial as well, right?
Yes, that's where the Pacific Horizon...
So it's closer to the, the commercial property further away from the residential?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Can you go back one slide? So, no, that was it. Board one, okay. So we previously have approved a smaller setback to the property to the west.
Correct.
And so that decision is sort of, not necessarily tying our hands, but is to be consistent with that decision and to avoid what would, it would look like this, right? So it's interesting that, you know, we talked about this in the one-off, like this is, we did this six months ago or so?
Yeah, probably close to it, yeah, a year and a half ago.
Same thing.
Five, five.
Eighteen months, six months, it's all relative up here. I guess the cautionary tale is, it's a cautionary tale, right? You just, you, we tend to do these property by property and without the further, broader context, and now we get to a point where there is a home right next to this, and the buffer isn't going to be adequate potentially because of, one of the reasons is because we made a decision 18 months ago, but I think we made, I don't know that it was a bad decision then, it's just the ramifications of it are, you know, staring in our face right here. That would be a bad side plan.
Yeah.
What you have up there today would be a bad side plan, so I get where you're all coming from. As we hear public comment tonight, I'm just thinking about, one decision leads itself to another to another, and it feels like it's one-off at the time, but it's, it's connected.
I do think that it's worth mentioning, though, that, that property that we're talking about, and even this one, is that with us doing the one-offs, it does give us some latitude to require some different things than...
It does.
The property to the west, I think that they talked about that the backside of their property is a little bit nicer, so that what was at that point a home, right, wasn't going to have to look at just a cinder block wall or whatever, and so I do think sometimes that trade-off, yeah, it's a one-off, but you're right, like the ramifications can sometimes come and nip us in the butt a little bit.
I don't even know if we could even potentially have seen this, right? But it's, that is a good example of decisions we make up here, or long-term, so.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, is the change, is the change that now this property's been purchased?
Yeah.
What, whereas before hadn't been? It wasn't part of the...
No, it was not. It was not a part of the decision last time.
It's a standalone.
It's standalone, yeah.
Standalone project, but being, when we were looking at that other, this, this still is a home, I guess, the home would be demolished and this would be repurposed, so there's your...
This is the challenge of sort of infill, right? In context, the other one made, made a good, made, made sense, because the backside of it was, was a home, and we want to, you know, move closer to the, to the business, and all right, that makes sense. Now, now we're just, it's reversed, and makes it a little more challenging, but I mean, you're, it could, the offset could be accommodated, and it would be a very poor layout.
It would be not as nice. I don't know that it would be poor, but it would be noticeable, I'm sure, and one way or the other way, to me, it's not that big of a deal, I guess, I don't know.
Public hearing?
Public hearing. I'd entertain a motion to go to public hearing for item C.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall.
Second.
Second by Councilman Took. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item C, the maybe site plan development enhancement overlay. Anybody who would like to speak to that? Name, rank, and serial number.
No problem.
Just name.
No problem. My name's Brad Maybe. So this is my project that I'm doing. I just came to have any questions or address any concerns, basically. I know one of the concerns Councilman Marshall brought up was the residential piece. I don't know if this eases it at all, but we've definitely been in communication with V. Hanks, which is the owner of that property there. He's an incredible guy. I actually was in communication when we did the river bridge next to it as well, so we have a good relationship there. But that's kind of the main thing why we ended up coming back. It wasn't necessarily the size of the building, it was actually the flow of that parking lot. And so our biggest thing with this development is we wanted it to match that LNS, so it didn't look like two separate developments. So we went in and got the same architect, but then also, like you said, I think that's a, that'd be a tough one in that parking lot, in your access, to put 10 feet of a barrier there, and then five feet. It just, it just doesn't flow. So that's the main reason why we came back in here, is the flow of that access.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sorry, just...
Questions for applicant?
No, I appreciate the work, because I think I want people to go down on South Lane, and then...
For sure.
Then merge, or go to the light and...
For sure.
Main Street, so, and I think what you, what you're proposing to do helps that flow much better than something like this, so I appreciate that. And thank you for the input on the resident there, that's, that's good to know that you're working with them.
No, that's, that's a big concern, for sure.
Is there, is there a wall that needs to go between your property and the Hanks's property?
Correct me if I'm wrong, it's a privacy fence that will be put there.
Okay.
A six-foot privacy fence, or five-foot privacy. So yeah, there will be a fence that's put in, and we matched what LNS was doing as well with that.
Right. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Still in public hearing, anybody else from the public that would like to speak to item C? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Euler. Second by Councilman Cardon. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Discussion back up here for the maybe site plan development enhancement overlay.
Looks good.
Looks, looks great.
Yeah.
Matching it with what's next to it.
Yeah, I appreciate that they took the time to go find the same architect and, and be consistent through the entire development, that's, that's nice.
And their trees look much bigger, so you know?
Yeah.
Give me nice.
Just fast-forwarded those trees a little bit, maybe 10, 15 years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that acknowledgement to Councilman Marshall. It's a year, year and a half, that's, it does seem like yesterday that we were just talking about the differences and relationship with the property, and now those properties have changed hands, and we have a vibrant Main Street, and certainly a vibrant south end of Main Street, where a lot of things are moving, and here's another piece of movement. And I do second what he said. Thank you for working with the property owner next to you, trying to make sure we're in, we're doing right by everybody that we can, that, that is in the area. If there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion for item C.
I move to approve the ordinance for the maybe site plan development enhancement overlay based on the findings and conditions listed in the staff report.
Okay, he didn't read them.
He didn't.
He didn't, he's out of breath.
I've been given, I've been given the nod from Vaughn before, so I'll take that as a yes.
Josh said no.
I didn't see Josh. Oh, he gave you the nod.
Josh gave you the lawyer look, and it was just straight.
Okay. All right, motion made by Councilman Cardon with the findings and conditions, second by Councilman Marshall, a roll call vote here. Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Item C is approved. Takes us to item D, ordinance to modify the city's requirement for detached accessory dwelling units on sites that are one acre or larger. Mr. David Anderson.
Once again, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm going to take a quick second before perhaps Mr. Mann leaves for the evening to just mention something that I don't think it should be a big deal, and I kind of regret that it is, but for cities in recent years, getting the State Department of Workforce Services to find that we have submitted a report on our moderate income housing efforts, and finding that we're compliant with the state statutes as part of that effort, has us on pins and needles a little bit each year. If we went back three years ago, the majority of the cities in Utah were initially found non-compliant. Like, I think it was more than 70%. Two years ago, we had a scare where the folks reviewing our plan misinterpreted kind of our status in terms of what we needed to do to be compliant. And it was two years ago as well, I believe, that the state legislature upped the game for cities, and made it such that cities that are not compliant lose priority status when it comes to being able to pursue certain types of transportation dollars. So we were really happy this past week to receive a letter from, from that department, the Department of Workforce Services, the, the judges of plans, and Mr. Mann, he was our point guy on getting a report put together, getting it submitted, doing a little bit of, of homework with the personalities there in that office, to make sure that we were on good footing when we submitted, and thank you. That, we didn't expect anything else, but yet, it's a bit of a relief to get that. So, back to Title 15. The proposal, I think, is fairly straightforward. If you don't know the history, you can probably guess, we have a, a property owner in the community that has a lot that's larger than most, larger than an acre, and they've proposed to build an accessory dwelling unit on that lot that would be larger than 1,000 square feet. It was just a few years ago in the past that we added the provision, in fact, I'm going to skip forward here, we'll come back to that. We added a provision, that doesn't really help, we can just ignore that. We added the provision that limited the size of accessory dwelling units that are detached, so a separate house, basically, on a lot to 1,000 square feet. And the experience that led us as staff to proposing that change, which ultimately the council approved, was related to somebody building a detached ADU on an 8,000 or so square foot lot. So a lot is about a fifth the size of what we're talking about here, and in that instance, it had to do with scale, and, you know, kind of managing the visual and maybe kind of perceived impact that an ADU in a situation like that would have on neighbors. In short, as, first of all, the building official and I talked about this, and then talked with the DRC and Planning Commission, I think there's generally been consensus that it makes sense to allow for a larger ADU, and you get a lot that might be as big as 200 feet wide by 200 feet deep, particularly provided that that detached ADU, effectively we're talking about a house, meets the setbacks that any other house in that zone would be required to meet. In that case, as is proposed here, again, if a lot is one acre or larger, the proposal is to not have a limit on how large that house could be, which would be the same if it were the primary dwelling, if somebody wanted to build a 10,000 square foot house on an acre lot, they likely could do that, they'd have to meet setbacks. We don't allow every square inch of a lot to be covered with something that's impermeable, like concrete asphalt, a roof, and those types of things. One of our planning commissioners pointed out that we kind of have a, a size limitation built in that way as well. Trying to just take a step back from this situation and looking at it maybe more broadly, as it would come into play throughout the community, we don't have a lot of lots in Spanish Fork that are an acre in size, so inherently, this would apply in a limited number of situations. And I believe you, in the areas that have one acre lots, you could put a pretty large second house on those lots, and it wouldn't necessarily really look out of place. Still have height requirements and different things like that for the detached ADU. Councilman Cardon and I talked earlier today also about something that was floated in the Planning Commission meeting, which it might be, you still might feel like some type of square footage limit should be applied to a detached ADU, even if the lot's an acre or larger, and I think certainly that could work as well. But all in all, simply changing the code to allow for detached ADUs on lots that are an acre or larger, provided that they meet the setback requirements for the primary dwelling, so in cases like this, we're talking about 20-foot side yard setbacks, 25 front, rear, some different things like that, more significant setbacks than what we have in typical subdivisions. Provided that those things are in place, there wouldn't be a square footage limit. Last thing I want to touch on, we, we talked quite a bit about notion of architectural compatibility, which, again, I think you get into a subdivision kind of a situation where lots are smaller. Having things that don't starkly stand out is helpful in terms of making things feel like a cohesive neighborhood. That being said, the phrase "architectural compatibility" is really subjective, so that is something we have struggled to administer, and I think to administer it properly, probably be a number of pages of explicit design guidelines that, you know, would give us maybe boxes to check, or something like that, to determine if something's architecturally compatible, and we haven't necessarily felt the need or desire to get that involved on building design yet. But the suggestion was also made in the Planning Commission meeting that there be some additional latitude when it comes to determining what's architecturally compatible on these bigger lots. A lot of times, and it's the case with sort of the subject property here, the existing residence on the property was built in the early 1900s, and really steep roof pitches, for example, different things that are hard to replicate, or at least it's very unusual to see the features of that home replicated in contemporary construction. So, you know, if compatible means try to match, that gets to be a struggle, and I think the Planning Commission appropriately recognized, tried to interpret what they said, that it's not that important to match, is kind of my ultimate takeaway of what they had to say. So that's where the additional language came into play, it was since the Planning Commission discussion on this, where, I'm just going to describe it as I read it, the Planning Commission's comfortable allowing for some additional latitude in terms of what is or is not architecturally compatible, maybe it's more a matter of architecturally appropriate than compatible. So, a few nuances to that, apologize, it kind of takes me a little while to talk through it, but any questions?
Questions for Dave before public hearing on this? Questions for Dave before public hearing on this?
Trying to decide when to ask either now or after.
Yeah, me too.
I'll be here.
We'll ask you.
You'll be around.
We'll ask you after.
I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing for item D.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall, second by Councilman Euler, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item D, anybody from the public that would like to speak to this public hearing item?
Uh, my name is Jake Glassley. Couple of questions I have about this is, how is this different than having somebody subdivide and build the second home? Sounds like we're just allowing someone to go in and build the second home on the lot without having to buy in, paying the impact fees, paying base utility fees, but allowing them to have a second proper, second house on the property. So, I'm just curious, what difference is this? I understand the need for ADUs and the benefits they allow, but it sounds like we want to build basically just a second home without having it being subdivided. So, that's my question.
Thank you. Thank you, Jake.
Thanks, Jake.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, second by Councilman Carden, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Discussion back up here.
So Jake asked my question, so what's the difference between?
Did you plant that?
That's exactly what I was gonna ask Dave, is what prevents, or what's the difference, differences between if somebody just does an ADU, which is basically putting it in their backyard, I guess, as to subdividing, or I assume there are more requirements with the property as far as access, driveways, different things if it's subdivided compared to just an ADU, is that right?
Yes. Um, ultimately, with an ADU, it's just a second, and I, I'm gonna try to put it as simply as I can, not trying to oversimplify, but it's just a second home on a property, that's an ADU on a property. It can be part of, the, the two homes can be part of one structure, an attached ADU, now we're talking about detached ADU. Um, and with that, the owner of the property has to reside there. Um, we don't allow, for example, with an ADU situation, for both of the dwelling units on the property to be rentals. We call that something different, oftentimes that's just a duplex, and by way of zoning, that's not allowed. In some ways, I think that's a big deal. Um, subdividing, I think in some situations probably is a viable option. I will speculate in this case that, um, because of sub, excuse me, because of requirements that come into play when somebody proposes to subdivide a property, which among other things means, uh, that property has to meet our current requirements in terms of having utilities available, having street frontage improved, and also meeting some criteria like minimum lot width for each of the properties and that sort of a thing. Um, if there's an existing home on a lot, even if that lot's an acre in size, um, in many cases, it would be impossible to design a way to split that lot in two so that the lot that that existing house would be on meets our setback requirements and different things like that while allowing room for another home to be located on another lot, a newly created lot, so you could kind of do the same thing but have them be on separate properties. Um, I, none of which necessarily is the city's challenge to deal with, right? Somebody wants to add another home, sometimes just meeting those requirements is what's, what comes into play. Um, but indeed, I think in this particular case, because I know what challenges other folks have with getting utilities to this particular part of the community, um, I, and things like that, I think it would probably be cost prohibitive.
Dave, can I, oh, sorry, real quick, just to follow up, so a flag lot, kind of, where's the city stand on flag lots? We, we said no flag lots, right?
Yeah, because we require a certain amount of width that, so the concept of having just a driveway to get back to an area that somebody could build on, that doesn't meet our zoning criteria today.
Which would make it difficult then to subdivide in some cases if that's the only way you could lay out a lot, right?
Yeah, by way of, the configuration, exactly.
Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, the, this individual, or if we're talking about a one acre parcel right now, the only thing that we are changing is that whether or not the size of what they can build, because as of right now, they could build a thousand foot, a square foot ADU regardless of what we said tonight because of the way the state statute is written, correct?
That's true, yes.
So, really, all we're changing is what size that they can be?
Based on the size of the lot.
Based on the size of the lot, right? So, it's one acre or bigger, but, and then I think that's where that question earlier that I was talking with Dave about is, do we, do we need a size restriction? Obviously, we're talking about setbacks and different things like that, I don't, there's part of me that says, yeah, I think that makes sense to put something in there because who's not to say someone's gonna come in and put a 5,000 square foot house on their lot when their house is 1,000 square foot, but at the same time, do we care? I don't know.
Isn't it just reversed at that point? So, if you have a 1,000 square foot house today and you build a 5,000 square foot house behind it, your ADU is the 1,000 square foot and you need to require them.
Yeah, you're right.
There's 5,000 square foot houses that would build a 1,000 square foot ADU behind them on much less than an acre.
Sure, which would happen.
Which, which is in state statute, too.
Yep.
So, an ADU, are you sharing utilities then? Is there just one utility, utility bill that goes to that address?
It can work that way, but most often, we're trying to get separate utility meters and different things like that for various reasons, at least I think that's our latest train of thought.
Yes, typically, certainly on power, um, it's generally a separate service and required. The other utilities are typically on a capacity basis, if it can gravity sewer and connect to the other home system, that's probably just fine.
So, if they're building behind an existing home on a narrow lot, are they running another sewer line back to the new home?
We've seen both, and I, and I think we would allow both, with the exception of electrical, we'd like to see separate services for separate structures.
I think one major difference between subdividing and ADU is ownership remains on the property, that's, that's a major issue. I mean, that's a, I think, part of the, sort of the lenience of going with the ADU is the owner stays there, um, accommodates a renter in front of them or behind them, but they're there on their property, and it, I think that, I think that matters.
Yeah.
I think you get, I think this could be argued both ways, I appreciate Jake's question because I think it's, it's important to understand the ramifications of all this. I think the applicability of this is pretty small in Spanish Fork, how about you could count the number of acre lots fairly quickly? And then there's a community up by my house that, that has a few, but they're very, very few. Um, most of them are probably, you know, 6,000 square foot homes on one acre lots, and it'd be very difficult to do this anyway, and so to, to find an acre lot with a small enough current resident to build behind you is, there's a lot of boxes to check, and the applicability really starts to shrink in places that, um, I think matter, and I, and I, and the owner of this could, you know, subdivide that 1,000 square foot off and, and do something in the back of their house, but Kevin, you're right, flag lots aren't, aren't, we don't want them. Um, but I like this direction because, one, ownership, two, um, it utilizes that lot much more effectively than without it, um, and it gives the landowner some flexibility to, you know, to build their dream home behind and have their, you know, their future children's house in front of them or behind them or something.
And we're doing our part, right, with the housing crisis?
I think so, yeah.
We're trying to be good actors.
If this was applicable everywhere in the community, I might be a little more uncomfortable, but it's, it's just not, it's just not going to be very extensive, and, and I think in this, I'm not usually a fan of one-off situations, and, but here, this makes, this makes sense to me.
I think it, as, excuse me, as I looked at this, for, for me, one of the challenges that I was weighing was the size and, um, you can do a lot when you have bigger, bigger parcels. Uh, I, a similar comment is Councilman Marshall, that for, for me, the issue of, is, is about having a homeowner there, and, and you could require subdivision, and then you'd just go through the subdivision process and have, um, and you might lose that, but, but, uh, for me, the setbacks in, you know, in my neighborhood where, where I have, um, 25 feet in my backyard, 25 feet in my neighbor's backyard, the size of the house, what ends up looking, you know, right next to a fence line, that becomes a big deal, whereas on an acre lot, you probably have a lot more space, you could have a bigger home and, and have those setbacks. Um, so I think you, I think from, from my perspective, you guys, as you're talking about this, homeownership component's a big deal, the, the applicability is also a big deal. Um, and I think it, it gives an option for, for landowners to do something productive with their property that, that we might be losing, you know, in, in some of our larger lots, because people aren't maybe putting horses back there, um, in, in some of the places, and so they, they have land that is underproductive, maybe it's storing junk instead, and I think putting, putting that larger lot to, to use is a really productive way, and this, I think, can accomplish that, so I, I love, I love this, this concept as well. Um, and, oh, if you, I mean, our, our research, I think, is a few years old now, but I don't know that it's stale, as we communicated with and asked our residents about ADUs, I think they had two main issues. One was, we're good with accessory dwelling units of some kind, we didn't, I don't know that we talked about internal versus external, maybe we were mostly focused on internal with that one. But the two main issues were homeownership and parking. And, and with, you know, if you can address those two issues, they were comfortable with letting there be a few more homes and where families live in the area because, uh, it won't have an impact, so parking and, and home.
Interesting.
Go ahead, Sean.
Um, you could, the homeowner could, tear down their existing primary structure, build this 5,000 square foot house, and then put the accessory, a new one behind them. That seems super unproductive, right? This is a way to get to the, get to the same result in a more efficient way, uh, more cost-effective way, and accomplish the same goals, and I think it still fits the character of the community.
Do we have any ordinances that limit the size of a shed you could put in your, in your yard behind your house, detached shed?
We have a height limitation.
A square foot each?
Uh, not explicitly, but yet there is a limit, and the limit is derived two different ways. What can you fit within the setbacks? But then also, we only allow, um, and I could check on the exact number, I think for something like up to 70% of a lot to be covered with something other than basically landscaping, so you'd add up every impermeable thing, and that also then limits how big stuff could be.
That was my next thought, is we allow this, and then you've got a home already on there, they build, uh, 5,000 square foot home, and then they've got this massive shed as well, right? Is there some kind of limit as to how much building structure you can actually have on a lot?
Yeah. Okay. Can I mention one other thing? Gentleman brought up impact fees, I think that's worth noting, just to be clear, we don't charge impact fees for ADUs, so unlike if, you know, a new lot was created and somebody wanted to build a regular house, we absolutely would charge impact fees. We do charge utility fees entirely, I believe we charge hookup fees and different things like that that come into play when somebody builds a new, new house. Um, I don't believe that in most situations, when somebody builds a house that's larger than, larger than 1,000 square feet, to use it as a detached ADU on an acre lot, that that's gonna be affordable housing at the end of the day. Um, but yet, one of the strategies that we've used, uh, to demonstrate, straight to the state that we're serious about trying to encourage the production of new moderate income housing, is the approach that we don't charge impact fees for ADUs, whether they're internal or detached like we're talking about now, so just to be clear, that is, that's how we would handle these situations.
Well, I think you mentioned cost efficiency, I think that plays into it, I think the financing of something like this probably plays into cost efficiency, too. Subdividing is a different type of financing.
Sure.
Where you should have quite a few acres and subdivide acres, and you're selling lots or you're doing something, that's why moderate income housing plans come into play is, you can finance ADUs on the same kind of loan, same kind of deal. Any other questions for Dave or staff on this one? I think it goes without saying, I think, discussed a little bit here, but appreciate DRC and Planning Commission and the minutes that, uh, that are in here for us to read up on. If there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the ordinance to modify the requirements for detached accessory dwelling units.
Motion made by Councilman Took.
Second.
Second by Councilman Marshall, roll call vote here, Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
And Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Item D is approved. That's done for public hearing section of our agenda, takes us to new business, uh, items A, B, and C in new business. The first one is resolution authorizing the mayor to sign, uh, the SVP conversion contract and the Public Works Director to sign third-party contracts for SVP water dedications. Strawberry Valley Project?
Strawberry Valley Project, yes.
Wow.
C.
I mean, if you're gonna sign it, you should know what SVP stands for.
I didn't even go country on my.
He's even, knows the history on the Strawberry Valley Project.
I've got some slides, I'll show you later.
So, we talked about this in a work session a month ago or so, um, a little more in-depth than I intend to go today, so I've got a few of those slides just to remind what this contract does. Uh, as mentioned, the resolution will authorize the mayor to sign the conversion contract. Uh, once that's done, water can be transferred to the city through water dedication agreements, um, I'm sorry, through, uh, third-party agreements. Currently, they're being done through water dedication agreements, but this new process would, uh, require these, uh, third-party agreements that then would authorize, uh, the Public Works Director to sign to facilitate the transferring of water. So, a lot of history with the contract, it was, the original contract was signed in 1920, and it was a way to administer the water that was imported from the Strawberry Valley and Strawberry Reservoir as we know it today, here to South Utah County. Um, part of that, Spanish Fork City was an original signer of that contract, and back then, and up until, uh, the 1980s, and, and even in there, that water was delivered through irrigation systems and the deep gutters you still see along the side of the road to water our yards here in Spanish Fork. Um, in 1980, the city saw an opportunity to purchase some more strawberry water rights, and they did so. Um, in the 2000s, there was a special footnote, um, created footnote six that would allow water to be used in a pressurized irrigation system, as we use it today, uh, through a water dedication agreement. So, in 2009, the city started accepting water dedication agreements and has, uh, received 2,500 shares of strawberry water, which has served us well. It's a great source of water for the city, it's stored in a reservoir, it, it is there in times of emergency, and when we don't need it, it's staying in the reservoir, so it's great sustainable water that's important to us as we grow into the future. Um, years later, in 2015, the Bureau of Reclamation updated its definition of irrigation and removed this footnote six, which effectively stopped the ability for water dedication agreements. However, it wasn't really enforced, and that's continued to happen until January of 2022, when a new, uh, director came in and says, I'm not comfortable signing these anymore, um, I don't think it's allowed anymore. And so, that started this process of we need to legally change the contract to allow this water to be used as Spanish Fork and other cities are using it to water our lawns, um, no longer considered commercial agriculture irrigation. Um, so we've been working through that process for a while. Um, two big things that we've talked about with the 1920 contract that, uh, are being changed with this contract today. One, the water was a pertinent, or currently is a pertinent to the ground, meaning the water is tied to the ground and can't be, if it irrigated this acre today, in the future, it would stay on that ground and tied to it. Um, and then used for agricultural purposes. And then used for agricultural purposes. And as I mentioned, that definition has changed a little bit to where now the Bureau of Reclamation is saying that doesn't mean watering our lawns. So this is really important to a lot of people as we look at population projections such as this one from MAG. And we're seeing this coming and knowing water is our precious resource. We're gonna need to use it and have good reliable water to deal with growth. One of the challenges and the reason it's taken about a year to go through this process is there is a lot of entities involved that are looking from different angles. We've got irrigators that are, wanna just water their farms and they need to be protected. And that's been the number one goal of this contract is to make sure those irrigators continue to be protected as long as they want to farm their ground, as well as several other water users that are involved. So over the last year, I won't go into detail on all of these, but a few things, early on, it was, as the big group met, we saw there were so many diverse opinions, it was really hard to get anything done. So a smaller group was formed to kinda work through the process. Marlo Smith, you know, from, from my office has been very involved with that, working through how to, how do we transfer this water? Spanish Fork City has developed a good process to transfer water and they used it as a model to, to work through this contract. About a month ago, August fifteenth, the Bureau of Reclamation Director said, I will no longer sign these water dedication agreements. It was kind of him drawing a line in the sand, saying, let's finish the contract. So fast forward to today. This resolution is in front of you. There is a signing for the contract scheduled for Thursday. So this, tonight would be to authorize the mayor to sign this contract to convert this water, so we can move forward. Just to summary again, there's a lot of people involved in this contract. A lot of people signing. It's amazing to me, in this last meeting, everyone seemed to be on board with the contract. So that's, that's been monumental. It converts water to be legally used in pressurized irrigation systems or for miscellaneous and industrial purposes. It no longer is tied to the ground. And there's a process of this third-party agreement that will happen between an irrigation company, landowner dedicating water or a developer and the cities to kinda outline things like carrier water that needs to be left in the irrigation system. We can also, after this contract, move water from one irrigation system to another, assuming there's capacity. So this, these third-party agreements will get specific in the details of that. So that's, that's what, what's before you tonight. Any questions? There's a whole lot of history and details. And if it's legal, we'll turn to Joshua here, who's our expert tonight.
Two history lessons in one night. It's been a good night.
It's pretty good.
It is.
Do we need to call John Menon Hall and have him give us some water history?
If you called him, he'd run down here.
He could do us, he could do a lot better job than I could with that history.
No, you have some footage of something, you could.
Of your dad out moving the water gate or something, probably.
Some good grainy.
Run down here.
Grainy seventies footage of something like this.
I don't wanna see it. So Corey.
The process was established a long time ago. Turns out, some rules changed. It's no longer applicable. We developed a new process to get to about exactly the same result.
Yep.
Yeah?
Yeah.
All right. Just checking.
I think in the nineteen twenties, when they created this contract, if we're able to see Spanish Fork, South Utah Valley, South Utah County, it would, it would boggle their minds a little bit, right? And, and foreseeing what this water would mean to us today, I think they knew the importance, but getting it right in a contract in those times was.
Sure.
I don't know possibly.
Yeah, I think it, I undervalued the, the process that you all went through for sure. But then the result is, we get to use it the way we're, it was.
The way we have been for many years.
Yep, and it's extremely important. Now it's sort of codified with the contract. It's, it's less dependent on someone's personal preference from the BOR, whomever decides, I don't wanna do this anymore. There's a process in place. So I like that it's more formalized now and I appreciate the, the hard work that Marlo went through over the last year and a half to get here, or six months. I don't know, Dave, whatever the number was, but hard work. To get that many people to sign off on it, that's, that's, that's impressive.
Perhaps the biggest revelation I got out of the discussion from you was that the users, those involved are in unanimous agreement at the moment?
The last large meeting, there were no large issues raised by.
General consensus has been reached then.
General said, well, we'll all sign.
Yeah, which is in wa, in water, a big deal.
No.
That's a big deal. That's unique.
I think this benefits everyone. It protects those that have used it as it historically has been forever, but also gives them the ability, when it's, when it's time for them to do something different with their land, they see the value in being able to use that water going well into the future and, you know, to be able to take care of yards and people as they move forward, so.
Well, I, I think it, it's important to touch on, you don't even know the, all the history and the details about this to know that the water that has helped shape this valley, it comes from a reservoir that's a very good reservoir. And in a time where we're looking at lake levels all over the west that are really tough, Strawberry's pretty good and it sits in a basin that, that, that is historically very good. And for, for this water to get here and be used and I, I do, I think, I, I'm with you. I think some people would be surprised what it looks like, but I'm so glad they planned for what it, what it could be like, because it's come to pass and this, this helps codify that. So I guess in the way of the residents, 'cause we get these questions quite a bit as elected officials, well, how are we gonna grow? And how do you do that without water? And it's like, well, you have smart people that, that figure out water and a super reliable source for the irrigation that we're talking about, as, as well as we have great, great drinking water access, culinary water in, in our city too. So there may be some things that, you know, that you worry about in your city. Thankfully, water doesn't have to be one of them. It's Corey's job to worry about it. He loses sleep over it, but as a resident, you shouldn't. We're, we're in good shape and this puts us in even better shape.
Yep. Thanks.
Any other questions for Corey or staff on this one? This'll be Thursday. Imagine there'll be a camera there to capture the event. Okay.
You looking forward to that? Camera event?
Yeah. That's how they get me to show up. They say there's gonna be a camera there and usually a hot dog. There'll probably be a hot dog.
Is that all it takes? I thought it was a microphone.
One of the two, a microphone, yes. Okay, before Shane keeps going on, I'd entertain a motion for item A.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the SVP conversion contract and the Public Works Director to sign third-party contracts for SVP water dedications.
Motion made by Councilman Euler.
Second.
Second by Councilman Marshall. Roll call vote here, Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
How do civil engineers feel about water engineers? Do you guys?
It's all the same.
You guys don't fight?
Nope. Nope.
Okay.
You, you put a structure engineer and a water guy together, maybe, but no.
Okay.
It's all good.
All right. Takes us to item B, Stevens Hill Annexation, Acceptance for Further Study. Mr. David Anderson.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second go at the Stevens Hill Annexation. Quite a few years ago, four years ago, the city council had accepted a petition to annex the area that we're looking at right here. So two hundred and almost ten acres west of the airport, west of, you can see it, I think, most easily on this image here, west of a half a million square foot building that's just getting finished up right there. The council accepted a petition to study the feasibility of annexing, I think, almost exactly the same area. And Title fifteen of the municipal code has a three-year shot clock, so to speak, from when somebody makes application for annexation to when that application expires. And that happened. I think it just happened earlier this year. And you might remember that we talked about this area in a work session a few months ago, because it's a little bit unique. First of all, there are a bunch of different property owners involved, many more than what's typically been the case in the past with annexation areas. And the configuration of the annexation and how power is provided today to the annexation, combined with what Spanish Fork City would have to do to provide power to properties in the annexation area if they were annexed, makes it a real challenge to annex anything but all of that at once. And I believe that part of why the proposal failed before was the applicants weren't able to get petitions signed by all of the involved property owners. And that, to date, has still been the case. I'm gonna bounce forward here. There are two different shades of green on this image here. You can see the yellow outlines. So I believe there are four different properties in the proposed annexation area today that are owned by folks that haven't signed a petition, saying, we wanna be annexed into Spanish Fork. Personally, I don't know their level of, you know, maybe angst at the idea of being annexed, but part of what we would evaluate as staff going forward is, and I've kinda been through it before, so likely it won't be a lengthy process, but you know, what is the prospect of, of maybe cooperating with those property owners to have them indeed be willing participants, to be participants in the annexation? Or are there viable options for, you know, maybe annexing without them being included? I don't believe the latter likely is very viable, largely because of the power situation that I briefly touched on earlier. What's before the council tonight is a proposal simply to initiate the process to study the annexation. With that being the case, you quite possibly wouldn't see this again for several months, unless you wanted to. We could give you updates as often as you'd, you'd care to be updated. I would like to mention a couple of things that I think play into why staff has recommended that this petition be accepted for further study. Incidentally, that's, that's what's out there today. Few homes, a lot of farming, different things like that. This image is taking, looking southwest, not far from that large building that I mentioned that's being finished up now. You can see the disturbed space here. And I think it was just kinda captured by happenstance by our guy that took this picture. But the area that's proposed to be annexed along the west side of this street out here now, I mentioned with the annexation that you considered earlier that being in the path of development. The folks that have asked to be annexed with this annexation have lived through what's getting to be embarrassingly a couple of years of horrible construction activity that has, I think, disrupted their lives in a lot of different ways. I should've realized this before, but when roads get, when utilities get put in roads out here that were barely roads to start with, everything goes away. And that was the case out here when streets were built to provide all of the things that are needed to allow for development to happen. And inasmuch as people have lived through that, they have now the end result, that they potentially could access city utilities and benefit from the things that, you know, they, to some degree, have kinda suffered through. I think that merits consideration, I really do. At least as much as what's needed to start this process and to let us do additional study and that type of a thing. But truly, this area, in a way that was very different a few years ago, has development potential. And whether it's time for that or not, that's for you guys to decide. But the reality is, is that Spanish Fork City can serve development out here for the first time ever. So just a little bit more maybe of my thoughts on, on the area. Again, of twenty-five or so properties involved in what's proposed. The vast majority of the folks have expressed a genuine interest, not once, but now twice, to be annexed. And when the Development Review Committee discussed this last week, we, we recommended that the petition be accepted for further study.
Dave, walk us again through the study. I know we've already approved one tonight, but so, or the process. We accept it for study. You guys do a study, then what's the process from there, from approval?
We provide notices to affected entities. So there are folks that are identified in the state code that we have to say, hey, Spanish Fork City is considering annexing this area. And those notices coincide then with the protest period. It was mentioned, for example, on the other annexation, we didn't receive any protests during that, that period. At the conclusion of that notice and protest period, we can schedule a public hearing with the city council for you to ultimately hear the proposal and to make a decision. And in abbreviated way, that's, that's kinda how it works. Typically, start to finish, it's no less than three months. In a case like this, depending on, I think, some things that we still would wanna accomplish, getting some easements for power, for example, and things like that, that we're still working on, that we'd wanna do as part of the annexation process. It might take a little longer, but I would say at least three months from now, that public hearing would be scheduled.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions for Dave on Stevens Hill Annexation? It's out in Palmyra, I could get, I could get into my.
If you could.
Drawl if you'd like.
There you go, you're right there. You know, Dave, you made a, a pretty good point that the road, I think, what is that, eight hundred west?
Yeah.
That the utilities are in. Yeah, you, you dig up that asphalt and it doesn't come back very well. It is a long process. And typically, I'm not a huge fan of annexation west, but in this specific case, because of the proximity of that utility, because of the impact that, that those property owners have had because of that utility, I think it is definitely worth studying, should we annex or not. So I'm supportive of that. During that annexation process, certainly want, and you mentioned this before, the, the power is, is important. I'm sure we have dedicated staff within the city that could provide power and make it happen, but sometimes they need help. And so I think studying that fully will be, be very good. Access to and from here, the road is gone. Is it, what does it look like when it comes back? How do people get out of here? You know, we're gonna put enough pressure on, what is that, seventy-seven there on the north side? At some point, we're gonna, we're gonna need to make improvements out there as well. And this is another, just one more chink in that road, you know, needing some improvement to get back to the interstate. So I think those type of things are important for me to see as we move forward. Some sort of recommendation about what would come into, not just rural residential, but the bigger picture of how does it evolve? You know, how's it grow into our city? You know, right now, it looks like it'd be industrial, but, you know, some analysis there would be good. The south end is really tricky to get back into our city. And, you know, I share this concern every time we talk about, the further we move south on this west side, the more concerned I get. But this is probably as comfortable as I get going south. So tell me how you access it on the south side as well. And do our due diligence throughout this whole process and, you know, make sure the property owners are involved. And if you do all those things, I think it is important to study it for further, because we just don't have enough data today to make an answer or make a good decision. So I'm supportive.
Mayor, if I may, let me just share two, two thoughts is, we explored this area his.
Mayor, if I may, let me just share two, two thoughts as we explored this area historically. Dave touched on this and I want to highlight two things. And Dave, in the DRC, recent DRC that we had, the applicants talked about, some of the landowners on either end of this, on the north and south ends of these, potentially being okay to come in or needing to be forced to come in if they were? Any resolution there?
I don't have any update yet from then, yeah.
So let's assume a worst case scenario for a moment. One, one thing that could be not different is that the landowners, either one or both on the north or south end of this annexation, say, we don't want to come in. We still have the ability to, to force them to come in. The reason that staff would recommend if we were to annex this in the future, and this is not something that's happening today, but I want to make sure that as you, as you accept it for the study, that you understand the, some of the possibilities. If, there, there are some properties on the north end of this and some properties on the south end of this, that if they are not annexed, we would be required to leave all of the electrical facilities in the area up to serve those two parcels alone and build new electrical facilities in the area to serve the, the homes and properties that do exist today. If we bring all of the properties in this area in that are on the electric service provided by the current provider in that area, we would then be able to take over the facilities and use those poles and not have duplicate electric facilities in the area. And so from a staff's perspective, as we move forward, one of those elements of study will be, was, and one of the reasons why this died for lack of action the first time, included specifically the power issue. Our staff's recommendation would be if, if we aren't able to bring those two in, properties in on the north or the south, that we, that eventually staff would, I think, recommend not to annex it because of the, the cost. There's just no reason for that cost or the duplication of those services. Another, the second element I wanted to bring in, and Councilman Marshall's comments touched on this, I, I think if I could go back in time 15, 20 years, one thing I would suggest that Spanish Fork would do differently when that airport crossed the road and, and shut down that connection to the highway would be to, at that time, build an alternate road around there, we didn't do, and of course, we can't go back. A lot of the property owners in this annexation have been participants and helpful participants in helping us to acquire the land, to make that connection. And you'll see as a part of the VERC project, we've got a water project that's out to bid this, this week. And then in the spring, we'll have the road project that would be under construction. And so I think Corey, if we do, if we're able to do it according to the plan, that road would be constructed next construction season, right? 2026?
Correct.
And so we will have, we would have with that, with that, a connection from whatever that north-south, or sorry, the east-west road is there. It's a county address now, kind of in the center of this, there will be a connection that goes from that point out to the highway by the end of next year. So that's a wonderful development. 5,000 South is out, thank you. That's White's Road, right?
My road.
It's your road too. I apologize.
1120 West, 5,000 South. I was there before White's was there. It's my road.
Could you hear him say it? Did you hear it?
I apologize. I apologize.
Nope, it didn't. He's.
I stand.
He's in the Palmyra mode.
Jason. I sit down, Jason. Anyways, there will be a connection from, from there by the end of next year. So that's a big development and I think we're really excited to be able to do that. And, and that's coming at the, in, in large part, a lot of the residents there are saying, yeah, we want to make, we want to make that happen. We see the value in that road coming in there. So that would be a part of that. I wanted to give those two, those two bits of color.
Thanks. I'm glad you mentioned that. That was about 20 years ago, the eight to 100 west that used to get out to, out of the main road north. That's a long time. And, and you're right, these property owners were instrumental on where our airport needed to be extended and get out that way. And, and it changed a lot of the daily traffic back and forth for, for them to get places. And, and so again, I think you both touched on it. I think we've all touched on it when we're talking about annexations, is the property owners wish and what they want to do. And here's, here's what these property owners are asking for. I think it certainly merits the further study of it with, yes, what they've been through on the, on the improved, long time improvements there, but, but also a road closure that's been there for a long time too. Any other questions for Dave or staff on this one? Okay, if not, I'd entertain a motion on item B.
I move to accept the proposed Stevens Hill Annexation for further study based on the following findings. First, the subject property is located within the city's annexation policy boundary and growth management boundary. And second, the city staff believes that this area can be serviced by municipal services. And then third, and finally, that the proposed annexation area appears to be in the path of development.
Motion made by Councilman Took.
Second.
Second by Councilman Carden. A roll call vote here. Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
And Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Item B is approved for further study. Takes us to item C, interlocal construction agreement with Nebo School District.
Guys, I've been waiting all night for this.
All night, hasn't he?
It's been a good one.
All night for this.
Put a tie on and everything.
I am going to forego, however, sharing another history lesson. Three of the night, in the same meeting, I'm not sure Councilman Euler will sleep if I do.
No, we're ready.
Go for it, Dale.
I'm not sure I should.
Go for it.
So this agreement that's before you with the school district, we met with the school district some time ago to discuss the possibility of improving our fields nine and 10 at the sports park, which basically consists of constructing a score tower like we have on the rest of them. We didn't build one on those fields, but to construct a scorer's tower, a batting cage and a storage unit there for the girls' high school softball team. They've been playing on our facility already and we've run into some conflicts over the last few years with state tournaments and other things that kind of disrupted their schedule. So the district decided that they wanted to pay for this project, to have these fields updated because we can move them over there and have a lot less conflicts with their season. So they basically can, can play uninterrupted. Since this is our property, we have hired the contractor, Hall Engineering, we've hired them to build it. So this basically is the agreement that the school district uses. They're paying for the entire project. We will, since we're managing the project and have hired the contract and it's our facility, we will, we will bill him and pay that, pay him and the district will turn around and immediately reimburse us as the project goes on. So I think that's it. Any questions for me? It's pretty straightforward. It's just, it's a pass through, but it's a agreement that, that the districts uses. We've worked with Reed Park and Vaughn, put this together, along with Frank Daybell of the district. The school district board approved this Wednesday night, Wednesday night last week. So they have approved it and we're just, they're just waiting for us to get it approved so they can move forward with the project.
This gives them first right to those fields? Is that what that says?
Yeah, and we had to be really careful how we did that because the interlocal agreement, as you know, it's 50 plus years old. And, and, and so what we wanted to make sure, since they're putting the money into the facility, that they had the, they had the rights to utilize it within reason. They still have to schedule it through us. We can still obviously use our own facilities, but our intent is to, during their season, to make sure it's uninterrupted for them.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. We will still use it for our games as well in evenings and weekends and just around their mostly daytime use. Hoping it would result in a girls' state championship softball. Yeah, it's like we could use some more of those.
At least one.
Yeah.
Get back on that.
We have to switch off once in a while and let the boys have a turn.
Okay. You know, Dale, I think these agreements are what really makes Spanish Fork, Spanish Fork, that partnership, that, that sense of community to come together, to put, to put things like this in place so that our community members at large can really grow and thrive here. Like this is, this is a lot of hard work. This is, it looks like a piece of paper, but it means something significant to the community and those people, and those kids that play and, and Nebo School District. I think that it's a great partnership between the two entities and thank you for putting this together and, you know, I love that they're playing on our fields. I think that's, that's, that's great. I, I like that, I mean, I know when the Nebo builds their own, their new schools, they put a baseball field on it, a softball field on it, a football field, all that. I love that they're playing on our, our rec fields. I think that just brings the community together in such a great way and around a great event and watching young women and men grow and, and thrive. So thank you for doing this. Appreciate it. I know it's 50 years in history and it could have a great history lesson here again tonight, but it's, it's what grew this community together. So thank you.
Yeah, I mean financially, it's a win-win for both of us.
Yeah, and those that, those that had this vision back then, obviously, serving the same citizens.
Yeah.
And there was no, no point in us each building our own facility. So their vision was great, save, save the city. It's not without its issues. Anytime you're dealing with two elected boards, right? We have to, we have to nurture this constantly because you get new people coming in, coming and going at all the different schools and in our facilities and new coaches and new athletic directors. So it, it needs constant nourishment, but it's worth all the time and effort because it's, it's exactly right. That's where we came from was, there's no point in us taxing the same people twice for, so we can each have our own facility. And it gets harder and harder as our population grows.
For sure it does.
The schools have a real difficult time fitting us in and some of our arts programs and things that we have to do in the schools, it gets tougher and tougher for them. And new, you know, new sports that are, come up like esports is now a high school athletic association sanctioned, sanctioned event. So they keep adding these events and of course, that occupies more space in their, in their buildings too. So it requires some effort, but fortunately, both sides still have that vision, which works really well.
As the head coach of the Mustang League Dodgers State Championship 2017.
You want to make this motion?
You kind of knew this was coming, didn't you? I think it was. I don't know. Maybe it's 2018. But, no, I think it's cool, I think it's cool that your, 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 your kids on the Mustang and Pinto leagues and, and the Fox and Philly leagues get to walk around, high school kids that, that are dressed up like, you know, the real baseball players and softball players that they look up to. And it's cool. I remember being cool when I was a kid and I think it's pretty cool that that still happens today, that we take our kids down for their rec league games and they're sometimes sharing cages and, and just getting out of a cage or into a cage where the high school kids were, were doing their thing, so.
And we still have a lot of them do clinics for us. So, yeah, it's, it's a great, great relationship.
Nobody else wants to take a history crack at it?
I'm just expecting a history lesson from Dale next time.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion for item C.
What year was the last Robinson girl playing softball? That was, what year was that? A long time ago. I'll bet she could still throw it and Shane couldn't hit it. They, a couple of them are, they can, they can still huck it pretty good. Yep. Yep.
There's not a fastball that I can't hit. There is a curve ball that I will miss every single time.
How about the rise ball? She threw a rise ball that you couldn't touch.
If it's moving, that's a different story.
It is completely different.
I did not say a moving pitch.
Okay.
It's a fastball.
Fastball, I'll give you that.
And it would hurt your hand too, right now.
Sure.
I'd entertain a motion for item C.
I move to approve the interlocal construction agreement with, with Nebo School District.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall.
Second.
Second by Councilman Euler. Roll call vote here. Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Item C is approved. Takes us, were we going to discuss this in work session in there?
Yeah. I moved, did we go back into work session in the explorer room?
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, second by Councilman Marshall to adjourn to work session in the explorer room. Roll call vote, Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.